Okay, it's one o'clock. Call this meeting to order. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Here.
We got a call.
Okay, recognition of guests. We keep getting more than us means we had last time. Uh, please sign in, everybody just sign in. Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any public comments? Helen?
No, there's none.
Okay. Okay, consent docket, we had a lot of special meetings. We had a lot of special meetings. Some of them were just short because it was, you know, possible quorum, because we had a lot of interviews with people. Um, so the following items are considered routine by the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. Discussion desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. So, I'm gonna go ahead and finish reading this, but if anybody wants to pull something, we will. Approval of the November twenty-sixth, twenty-fourth special meeting minutes. Approval of the November twenty-fifth special meeting minutes. Approval of the November s- sixth special election minutes. Approval of the November sixth regular meeting minutes. Approval of the November fifth special meeting minutes. And approval of the November fourth special meeting minutes and the approval of payment of claims. When I say head nod, then I'll move on, but if somebody wants to pull something, we can.
I've read through every one of them and satisfied, I don't know if risk, risk of the board.
I read through them, I missed one meeting, but um, again, it was basically just a notice of possible quorum, so. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to accept the consent docket?
I make a motion to accept the consent docket.
We have a motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent. Absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, discussion, consideration and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment and or postponement regarding items removed from the consent docket. We don't need that one. Treasurer's report. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is.
Nope. See that, that didn't make it.
Ah, okay, yeah, well. Okay, thank you Chad, saw yours.
Absolutely, you guys have um, hopefully the profit loss report, this is for the month of November. We um, did receive from the Chalkon Nation twenty-seven thousand one hundred. Um, the total um, Hochtown direct deposits. We only have thirty thousand three hundred sixty-six direct deposits, deposits coming to uh, us by mail. Um, which is down from a hundred and forty-four thousand and some change this time last year. So, we're getting fewer uh, monies in the mail, uh, and more being collected by Stripe. So, uh, Stripe uh, collected two hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and eight nonsense. So, we had a total lodging tax deposit two hundred sixty-two thousand and twenty-eight dollars. And that's up about eighty percent from this time last year. Uh, we got cigarette taxes of eighteen hundred and five dollars ninety-four cents. Sales tax was two hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents. And then our use tax was three thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars ninety-eight cents. Use tax is down about thirty-three percent from this time last year. So, uh, total general fund receivable was uh, five hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars seventy-seven cents. And you can see a list of the expenses. Um, most of the checks that we wrote for roads were last uh, month, previous month in October. We only wrote eighty-two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents uh, for roads in November. Um, total expenses a hundred nineteen thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents. So, our net operating uh, income was four hundred and thirty thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and six cents. And that's up about twenty-four percent from this time last year. We did pay, uh, we had to refund out of the registration and licensing's um, account sixteen hundred dollars. We had someone who uh, did register but was not in.
Town limits.
Our town, so um, profit and loss, uh, I'm sorry, the balance sheet is um, is just gonna reflect the balance in our account at the end of November. And that was seven million, uh, ten thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars and four cents. And that's all I have.
That is excellent, thank you. Yeah, we've got a few people that town limits are still, I had a question this morning from somebody, they're like, hey, what about, and I'm like, five miles north.
And to go along with that, I gave everybody a copy of the November deposits. Charles goes by what we give, but I go by strictly what the deposits are, it's laying there somewhere.
Maybe over here?
That's my, uh, you got one I have, that extra spreadsheet.
Okay.
Would you like?
You may, anyway, it goes real close.
Okay, well, that's good to have.
And that, but this writes it down a little bit more, but anyway. Over by month, yeah, over the past year or so, yeah, great.
Well, when we get a better trend, it'll be nice to see month over month. We're just not quite there yet, you know, until we get some consistency, okay? Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, uh, any more questions on the treasurer's report? Good, okay, uh, do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Todd, we have a second by Brenda, then we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Harry, firm it up. Okay, county administrators' report, we got that two seconds ago. Adam, anything special? A lot of this we've already seen.
Okay, yeah, uh, would you like for me to kinda read this off or?
Um, quickly.
Quickly, okay. Uh, so for our fire applicants, we received twenty applications for the position. We've scheduled uh, interviews for the top five applicants uh, this coming Thursday. Uh, all board members should have calendar invites inside of their outlook. Um, our interviewing panel is gonna consist of Mike Kelly is the executive director of Oklahoma Firefighters Association. Um, we have Jonathan Strayhorn, who is a staff, uh, who is a fire marshal, and Chad Tanner is also a fire marshal, and Chief Beagles, uh, who is of the Deer Creek Fire Department. As far as uh, police goes, we's, we've conducted in-person interviews with the finalists for the position of police chief. Uh, we're now ready to host an executive session in the future, either in a special meeting or in a future meeting, uh, to discuss the results of those interviews. We're very close to selecting a great candidate for this community. Um, as far as road maintenance goes, uh, we've met with property owners along the Shinnup Road to discuss concerns regarding the roadway and some drainage issues. We had identified some of these issues previously during our visits to the project site with our engineers. Um, however, it's still important to listen to the community, listen to the concerns, because you might uncover something that you didn't originally see, uh, as those people are from the area. Um, so we're kinda looking into doing a hydrological analysis on that area to identify the natural flow of the water, uh, and then some of the flooding areas historically. Uh, moving forward from that, we've conducted a multiple project site visits to Mako Green Lane, Old Hochtown Road, Pinion and Camp Ranch. Uh, again, these roads are, are being considered uh, for maintenance, uh, based upon the total number of residents, uh, and STRs that we have along these roadways. Um, we're hopeful to accomplish uh, some sort of ma- uh, maintenance on these roadways, uh, before the end of fiscal year, June thirty. Um, as far as private road acquisitions goes, uh, we've received the following easements back from property owners and developers. Uh, we've got Sunrise Ridge, Canai Toby Trails South, Canai Toby Trails South West, Canai Toby Trails, um, Pine Hills North, Sunrise Ridge East, and Timber Creek Trails South Base Seven. Uh, this is a huge step forward, and some of our next steps are toward legal to review those easement documents that we've received back. Uh, we gotta double check everything, make sure it's good to go, and then, once we make sure everything's great, we'll move forward with the town getting ready to sign and authorize those documents, and then moving forward from that, we'll uh, file the, file those records with uh, the county. Um, we've been dealing with the dilapidated structure, which is a public safety issue in the community. Uh, it's currently tied up in court, there's an entity that provided lumber to the project, uh, that filed foreclosure for it to be sold. Um, so right now, we're going to send our building code inspectors over there, and then we're going to look into uh, working with uh, the lawyer that's handling the litigation over that court case, and just seeing what we can do to get it cleaned up to our standard, just to kinda address the public safety issue. Uh, moving forward from that, planning and zoning, we had our TSW team here who's helping our planning commission write our zoning regulations and our subdivision regs, uh, come and visit uh, on November nineteenth. They stayed a few days in one of our local cabins, drove through the community, met with P and Z members, uh, one-on-one to address some of the projects and some of the zoning regulations that we've developed so far. Um, they've gotten a lot of ideas, and they're going back to uh, back to their offices now to kind of reassess, uh, some of the draft that we have written so far. Uh, the town hosted the walkability audit, hosted by ARP and Ketto here, we've got Oliver, um, and our Southeastern Regional Transportation Organization to assess and report on the safety and walkability of roadways and intersections along our two fifty-nine corridor. Had lots of great community engagement there, we had a very big group come out and we walked up and down the strip, uh, writing and taking all sorts of ideas and notes on uh, what we can do with uh, walk accessibility and accessibility and, and public safety and everything to our alternative modes of transportation. Moving forward from that, uh, we have a pretty significant issue right now, uh, with avenue. Uh, we have not received our final round of documentation, so they've been withholding some of the data that we've accrued, uh, whenever it comes to our licensing and tax supplemental data. And uh, Legal's drafted a demand letter right now for the last round of that documentation we're supposed to receive. It's a bit funny, because we are still receiving invoices from them. Uh, however, uh, we're gonna be withholding payment until we receive that last round of documentation, and Liz, our attorney, will be in, in contact with our community team. Um, I did just get an update from our wastewater engineering team, Garver. Uh, they have, uh, we should be receiving a draft within the next two weeks of our discharge permit for wastewater. And uh, they are continuing the two fifty-nine sewer line coordination with ODOT and all their design team. And uh, over the next month or two or so, I would anticipate some sort of workshops to be popped up, uh, from Garver. And uh, I brought Oliver Skinbo here today, he is from Ketto, to talk briefly about walkability and some grant opportunities for potential bike paths to the community. So, it should be just a real quick kinda speech, just to kinda inform us about uh, some of our intermodal forms of transportation.
Oliver, my name's Oliver Skinbo, uh, I'm with Ketto, uh, we're also partnered with SOA to form the Southeast Regional Transportation Organization. It is a uh, RTPO, it's the last one in the state. Uh, so we're brand new, we've got our feet wet, we're about a year into this, uh, we helped coordinate the walkability audit down here, and we're very excited to be helping with the community and get able to do more. Uh, one of the, the goals that we have with this upcoming year is we're gonna perform the first long range transportation plan in southeast Oklahoma. It's gonna come to seventeen counties, we are planning to host nine in-person meetings across the seventeen counties. We would love to be able to host one of those meetings down here to get more input. Uh, the walkability was a huge success, like Adam said, with the, the public engagement. And this kinda goes along with the state, the state has a long range transportation plan, but it's more like focused on policies and procedures. With us being the RTPO, we're gonna be focused more on what needs to happen on the ground, whether it's intersections, accidents, you, you make the word, hands-on. And we're in act as the liaisons between the state and the communities to help get those, just the forms between everybody. One of the instances of opportunities we have down here is with the hiking and biking, the off-road activity, and we'd like to explore opportunities for grants, et cetera, to help facilitate it. Part of our goal as the RTPO is we can be grant administrators, we can help provide assistance to variety, we can, we can submit for them, and yeah.
Allows access to some federal funding.
Yes, a lot of federal funding. Our organization is federally funded, and so we do have the ability to collaborate with federal funds as well.
Okay.
Can you please repeat the acronym RTPO?
Regional Transportation Organization is a RTPO.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Saw a grant this morning for a hiking, biking, trail, wheelchair.
Oh.
Like a trackhoe thing, they're twenty thousand dollars, and I'm like, I bet we could use at least one of those on our trail, so very cool. Okay, thank you Oliver. Okay, item number nine, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. Resolution of the governing body of the town of Hochtown, a current county state of Oklahoma, providing notice of our twenty twenty-five municipal election dates for the election of trustee positions number two and four. For the discussion, I wanna remind everybody that on the Town uh, Meeting Act, we don't have wards, you don't register as a Republican, a Democrat, or an Independent, it's just open seat. Um, open, but we do give them a number, one through five, so that we can keep up with which one is elected every two years. Positions uh, one, three, and five, and positions two and four. Two and four are up now, well, I mean, they will be this April, and they will be for four-year terms this time, not a two-year term. So, do we have any more discussion on resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen? You're good, Todd.
This is, this is the resolution that the election board is waiting on, so they might make it official.
Yep, okay, um, do we have a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen?
I make a resolution, we accept resolution twenty-four four fourteen.
Okay, Todd has the main motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Brenda, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
You and Helen gonna work together with?
Well, I was gonna tell her.
Election board tomorrow.
Just wanted, wanted to get this signed, I was gonna election board law.
Yeah, I had it ready, yeah, or, or we can take it over, cause I'm gonna be out of the election.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll get it gets there.
Yep, okay, good. Okay, item number ten, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. To amend and change the permanent speed zone, speed zone limits on State Highway two fifty-nine A by the request of ODOT. I believe that that request was made by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, did you get anything else updated on that, Adam?
I received a request to ask from ODOT, uh, with regards to that, um, and the uh, the school zone situation, the template of that letter of concurrence, uh, we have replaced that letter, it should be on the desk. But that'll be the letter that'll be signed, and we did remove, uh, ODOT removed the uh, mentioning of any school zone situation.
I don't see a letter anywhere.
It was a recommendation of reduction of a speed limit throughout the two fifty-nine, the two fifty-nine A.
Basically, it changes it on the damn road.
Sorry about that.
Is that the letter?
No, that's not it.
You said it was on the desk.
There's a bunch of pa- papers on there, I'll get it to you after the meeting.
So, just to be, make sure I'm understanding, this is only on the damn road, two fifty-nine A.
That's correct, so they're asking, uh, even though it's outside of our jurisdiction, they're asking for letters of support and resolutions of support from the town of Hochtown and from the city of Brokenbowl.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
And this is, again, this is at the recommendation by ODOT's engineers.
And more so with courtesy just to us.
That's correct.
For the towns and to Brokenbowl, that, that know what they're doing, that's community.
Well, we know whose tourist it is going down there, so.
Yep.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve the uh, resolution?
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Howard, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you, I'll get a ticket on the damn road, not my fault. Yeah, but it's, it's gotta change, we're just gonna pull that, yeah, it's not a school zone.
Okay.
Little scribblers there, right there. Okay, agenda item number eleven, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement to sign a concurrence letter to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the speed limit modifications along South Highway two fifty, State Highway two fifty-nine A. You got a new letter for me?
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve signing the concurrence letter.
I wanna see the letter. Do we have the letter, or not yet?
I can, I can find a copy if it's not on the table.
I just see stuff. I mean, whose stuff is this, Adam?
This is mine, this is all mine.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, but.
Here you go. This is the updated copyright thing. So, whenever they had sent it over to me, it just, they just used the wrong template for the letter.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The rest of it's good. Can we put this on the letterhead?
Yep.
The rest of it was all the same.
Basically, just maybe the school zone, so.
Yeah. This will come up again on U.S. two fifty-nine, but we don't have that yet. Maybe we'll have that one next month, but I know the engineers are looking at two fifty-nine, U.S. two fifty-nine. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the concurrence letter to ODOT?
I motion to accept the, we.
We have a motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
Seconded it.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Item number twelve, discussion, consideration, possible action approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to regarding filling the vacancy of the P and Z Commission. Adam, do you have any update on that?
Uh, we've received a, a few applicants for the position. Um, however, uh, if the board's ready to make this decision, I'm not quite sure, um, I think we should allow for a little bit more time to go through.
I was gonna say, until filled, if you, if you wanna see some more applicants, then let's um, maybe ask um, Shelley and Skip, and put it out there a little bit more for everybody in the room.
Yeah, so we've been advertising it, we pushed it out several times over Facebook, and we actually did have a few visitors this week come into the office and actually ask what the process is for how they comply, and then it took you to get a paper copy, et cetera. So, uh, we still haven't received those applicants back yet, um, so I'd anticipate several more people to still be in the process of applying.
Okay, it's a big job, but I'd like to take no action.
I would too, yeah.
Okay.
You want to make a motion?
We need a motion, did we skip that, no?
No, yeah, we don't.
Okay, um, item thirteen, discussion, consideration, possible action approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding committees. I still don't think we've updated the committees, have we?
No.
Adam, any update on committees?
I have none at this time.
Okay, we need to get on that. Um, item number fourteen, no action, yeah. Just as a refresher from the last two months, we've had some ki- kinda ad hoc committees, hey, can you help us figure this out, can you help us do P and Z? Well, it needs to be a little more formalized now that we're in town with how long those people serve on that committee, so that people can rotate off the committee, very similar to the board, so that you, you don't lose all that institutional knowledge at once, but we can start to have some more voices on these committees, so. Um, maybe try to formalize our committees a little more. Um, item number fourteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to appoint a Hochtown town clerk. Do we have discussion? Helen?
No discussion. Make a motion, and we appoint Helen Hardman as our town clerk.
We have a motion by Howard to appoint Helen as our town clerk. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Todd. Helen, can you uh, roll call vote this one for his place?
Can you officially do that?
I know, yes, okay. Uh, Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, but I know he would agree.
Oh, you could have that, yeah.
Uh, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Good girl.
That motion carries.
Okay. Helen officially remains our town clerk. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, discussion, consideration, possible action approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to appoint a Hochtown town, town treasurer, do we have discussion?
Seems like there ought to be, but I guess not.
I think we went over a lot of this when we decided to make these appointed, appointed positions, so, okay, great, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion with the uh, make the, is it Charles or Chad? Chad Ward.
Charles Chad.
It's, it's uh, Charles when, when Chad is here, but it's Chad when Chad Chad is not here, so we have a motion to appoint.
Charles Chadwick.
Charles.
With honor.
Chad. To treasurer.
Need a second.
Okay, we have a second, we have a second by Brenda, this is the fun stuff we get to do. Okay, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent. Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You still need to count the beans.
Okay, I like the numbers.
All right, uh, agenda item number sixteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to enter into an executive session for the following pers- purposes pursuant to Title twenty-five of Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven. B one, to discuss compensation packages for the appointed town clerk and appointed town treasurer. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
We have a motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Brenda, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay.
That motion carries and uh, executive session at one twenty-five PM.
We'll be back shortly, I wanted to um, just look at the rest of the agenda, I tried to do this and I forgot. If anybody doesn't wanna stay for the rest of this exciting work that we do, you're welcome to leave in the rain, but you are welcome to hang out and chill with your friends until we get back. Okay, we're gonna reconvene in open session, do we have a motion to reconvene?
Make a, go ahead.
Who? Brenda was the loudest, Brenda made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Todd, uh, are you ready, Madam clerk? Okay, all right, okay, roll call vote, reconvene.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
The motion carries, and we reconvene at one thirty-nine PM.
Okay, the statement of the executive session minutes from the Board of Trustees is that no action is being taken at this time.
I got you that ten percent.
Okay.
We'll still work on that.
Agenda number nineteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement on any discussion of, for the executive session, we don't have a discussion.
But is, does it take no action?
Yeah, yeah, no action, so we don't need that, okay. Item twenty, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement to develop a Hochtown employee handbook. I think we wanna develop it, but we just don't have it done.
That, that's right, I mean, it's, just wanted to bring, I'm the one responsible for this, being on, on the agenda. I know we've discussed things in the past, and what may or may not need do, but, you know, we've got employees coming on and fixing to hire some more. Day they come on, in, in my opinion, they need to know, well, number one, they know what their salary is, they need to know how much vacation they're gonna get, do they, do they qualify for paid time off? Uh, is their retirement plan handy, uh, or available, uh, as insurance, all of that, uh, our travel policy. All of that, I feel, I feel needs to be in some type of a developer book, that we can copy off others or something, but anyway, we, I, I just feel like it's imperative that we get that done, so, so our, in future, and present employees know what to expect out of us, know what they're gonna get. Just thinking it'd be the right thing to do, so.
I think O-MAG and OML both have those.
So.
Yeah.
Can't please.
Any more discussion?
Not to put Adam on the spot, but uh, uh, we talked about it at one time, I mean, I could probably go to the county and get a copy of theirs, and nobody wants to copy the county, but anyway, uh, talk about those, maybe they have a handbook, or anything we can look at?
Yeah, so I, I reached out, I saw this coming up on the agenda, and I reached out to the city of Shawnee, and uh, and I received a copy back from them, they're nice enough to share theirs with us, and so we can go through theirs and add, add, edit, change, remove, modify, amend, uh, to however Hochtown sees fit.
And it can be three pages right now, doesn't have to be.
All of it.
It doesn't have to be two inches thick, but anyway, uh.
I'd like to also see what O-MAG and OML have, comparison.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Yeah, so, particularly O-MAG.
Right.
Yeah, okay, um, any more discussion on that? Howard, you gonna lead that project?
I'll lead that project.
I'll be glad to help on that.
Thank you.
Okay, that'd be good, yeah, Brenda's got lots of HR experience. Okay, do we want to uh, approve the development of a Hochtown employee handbook, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we develop an employee handbook.
Okay, we have a motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Okay, that's helpful for everybody to have. Okay, item twenty-one, new business, any matter not noted which could not have been. Okay, item twenty-one, new business in matter not noted which could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting. Anything? Adam, you good? Okay, item twenty-two, discussion, consideration and possible action to adjourn, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Howard, roll call vote, please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent is absent, Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries and the meeting adjourns at one thirty-three PM.
That's okay, we're gonna make up for it, we're gonna have to have a special session. All right, thanks everybody, I know I owe you names and addresses.